Your Honor. All the meeting in the City Council for Monday evening, October 28, 2019, to order, please stand as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good evening, councilors, and Council President had a prior commitment for this evening, so I'll be filling in. He asked me to take his spot this evening. And Council Monahan is unable to attend as well this evening. So, we have the first item. Mr. Clerk.
The acceptance of the minutes of October 15, 2019, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Appointments. Communication from the mayor submitting a letter of resignation from David Zaff from the Brockton Conservation Commission.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the appointments of Lucia Cersei of 33 Dover Street, Unit 130, Brockton, to the Conservation Commission to fill the unexpired term of David Zaff ending MASH 2020.
Refer to Finance.
We have report of the Ordinance Committee for its meeting of October 2, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order of the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of October 21, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Ordinance Committee for its meeting of October 23, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of October 21, 2019.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have the petition of Chacona Stiellavera, 943 Front Street Wayman, for a garage license located at 50 Meadowbrook Road, Unit 5B, Brockton, Mass. In City Clerk's office, September 27, 2019. Hearing is signed for October 15, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Paperwork was on file. End Council, October 15, 2019. Continue to next full City Council meeting.
Time having arrived, I'm going to declare the hearing continue. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please come forward and give your name to the clerk.
Come to the podium.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Just state your name, so the clerk has it, please.
Good evening, all the members of the council. My name is Miguel Barzola, and this is my brother Alfredo Barzola.
Okay, good evening.
We are currently, we're the owners of the property or the condominium adjacent to 5B Meadowbrook, 50 Meadowbrook, 5B. And we just want to say that Jack Conius has done a lot of work in the property. Originally, it was abandoned property. He's done a lot of improvements inside and outside. And he's a really good businessman that takes care of his properties. And it's clear, based on what we saw, that he has made the whole condominium place a better place for all the members.
Better place to work, you're trying to say. There you go, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a comment as well? Anything you'd like to say?
Yes. So, like my brothers say, we're the neighbor of Jacob's. And I was very pleased once he arrived to the condominium, because now the condominium looks much better as it was before. So, we're still working together to make the place better. So, hopefully, he can have, he can have what he's trying to get, you know? He hopefully gets granted. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone else here in favor that likes to be heard at the same time? Please come forward and state your name. To the clerk, anyone else? No? All right. Yes? No? No? You sure? Okay. I'm going to clear that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Is there anybody here in opposition who wishes to be heard? Seeing none. Nelson Nacastro, you have a comment.
Good evening. Actually, the applicant, Mr. Di Olivera, is here this evening. And I just wanted to say that I've met with Mr. Di Olivera and Mrs. Di Olivera twice. I've talked to them on the phone a number of times. Currently, at 50 Meadowbrook Road, there are three condominium units that are changing hands and seeking transfers and things. In this case, Mr. Di Olivera is not seeking a transfer of a license. There was not a current license at this location. And so, all that is available for him to apply for at this time is a garage license. What has been discovered during the pendency of this matter is that the property at 50 Meadowbrook Road is zoned industrial. And an industrial use does not include either a garage license or an auto repair license. And I confirmed this with the city solicitor, Mr. Nacerella, as recently as two hours ago. I was told to pass on to all of you that unless and until Mr. Di Olivera gets a variance to allow this use there, that we cannot grant a garage license. Now, I've made Mr. Di Olivera and his family aware of this. I also made them aware of it 10 days ago, on October 18. And so, that's what I was advised to share with all of you.
So, that being said, Mr. Clerk, then there's no granting of this particular license based upon what the city solicitors...
Apparently, yes. If that's what the solicitor's findings are, I don't know how we can go against that.
Yeah.
Move the table, then.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table.
Mr. President, I just close the hearing first.
Yeah, yeah. The hearing's closed. And we'll go back and take the motion.
Move the table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table this item. All in favor? Goes to table at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, hurry.
Next item.
Petition to Jason Lopes and Nelson Lopes, 360 Ferry Street, Fall River, for a transfer of garage license located at 50 Meadowbrook Road, Unit 3, Brockton, Mass. End Clerk's office, April 23, 2019. Hearing is signed for October 15, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. All paperwork on file. End City Council, October 15, 2019. Continue to next full City Council meeting.
Time having arrived, I declare the hearing continue. Councilor Nacastro.
Excuse me. I wanted to make a motion to take 9, 10, and 11 together.
Motion's been made and seconded that we take 9, 10, and 11 together collectively.
Second.
Second. All in favor of that?
Well, you'll take...
And then, from there, I have been informed that both of the applicants, Jason and Nelson Lopes, are out of the country at this time. And I have been asked to postpone this matter for two weeks to our next Finance Committee meeting.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so, motion's been made and seconded that we're going to take Items 9, 10, and 11, and we're going to postpone it to our second Council meeting in November. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? So, those have been postponed until November's second City Council meeting that month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to 12.
Next item.
Item 12. Order. An order to delete Section 2-141, Ho Asian Personnel Board in its entirety, end Council,
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
September 23, 2019.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Ordinance.
The order is confirmed.
That report was favorable. Order that the Brockton City Council, acting on behalf of the City of Brockton,
Questions on passage to a third reading by hand vote. Hands up.
approve the request of a right of easement for National Grid as approved by the PA Commission
All in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
and its meeting of September 12, 2019, as stipulated. The appointment of Eric S. Smith as a special police officer, City of Brockton, End Council, October 15, 2019. for a one-year term ending January 2020. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. End Council, October 15, 2019. That report was favorable in Finance, and no recommendation of planning, as they would Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on confirmation by roll call vote.
not have jurisdiction over the property.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
If the PA Commissioner has already approved the easement, it is a matter for the City
Yes.
Borogard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Council.
Yes.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote.
Darren Encore?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Aniri? Azak?
Yes.
Yes.
Farwell? Borogard?
Yes.
Yes.
Lally? Cruz?
Yes.
Yes.
McGary? Darren Encore?
Yes.
Yes.
Nacastro? Aniri?
Yes.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative? Farwell?
Order is confirmed.
Yes.
Reappointment of William Shonick, 82 Main Street, Peel Box, 941 Marion, Mass.,
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
as a constable of the City of Brockton for a term of three years.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is confirmed.
Order that the Brockton City Council, acting on behalf of the City of Brockton, End Council, October 15, 2019. approve the request of a right of easement for National Grid as approved by the PA Commission and its meeting of September 12, 2019, as stipulated. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote.
That report was favorable.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Questions on confirmation by roll call vote.
Azak?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Borogard?
Yes.
Azak? Cruz?
Yes.
Yes.
Borogard? Darren Encore?
Yes.
Yes.
Cruz? Aniri?
Yes.
Yes.
Darren Encore? Farwell?
Yes.
Yes.
Aniri? Lally?
Yes.
Yes.
Farwell? McGary?
Yes.
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is confirmed.
Order that the Brockton City Council, acting on behalf of the City of Brockton, approve the request of a right of easement for National Grid as approved by the PA Commission and its meeting of September 12, 2019, as stipulated. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. That report was favorable in Finance, and no recommendation of Planning, as they would not have jurisdiction over the property. If the PA Commissioner has already approved the easement, it is a matter for the City Council.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Borogard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
Yes.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is confirmed.
Order that the Brockton City Council, acting on behalf of the City of Brockton, approve the request of a right of easement for National Grid as approved by the PA Commission and its meeting of September 12, 2019, as stipulated. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance and Planning. That report was favorable in Finance, and no recommendation of Planning, as they would not have jurisdiction over the property. If the PA Commissioner has already approved the easement, it is a matter for the City Council.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Borogard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
Yes.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the sum of $4,900,000 is appropriated to pay cost of sewer system rehabilitation work, including but not limited to projects designed to address sources of exfiltration, infiltration, and inflow, and sections of undersized pipe, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that, to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MASH General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the city therefore. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
No.
Borogard?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Darren Encore?
Yes.
Aniri?
No.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
No.
McGary?
No.
Nacastro?
No.
It's two in the affirmative. Seven in the negative.
The order is adopted.
No, it's not adopted.
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
The order fails, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My apologies, right? Number 19.
Okay. Order that the City Council amends the water purchase agreement, which originated on May 22, 2002, and was amended on September 6, 2018, between the City of Brockton and Aquaria LLC. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Borogard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
Yes.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the City Council amends the water purchase agreement, which originated on May 22, 2002, and was amended on September 6, 2018, between the City of Brockton and Aquaria LLC. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report was favorable.
Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Borogard?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
Yes.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative?
The order is adopted.
Order that the Department of Public Works would like to request that the City Council consider implementing a new ordinance to the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton, illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance. End Council, October 15, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable to draft an ordinance.
And the question now is on drafting the ordinance by a hand vote. All in favor? All opposed? Draft an ordinance.
An ordinance amending the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton, Article 23, Water, Sewer, and Sewerage Disposal, Article 3, Sewer and Sewerage Disposal, to add reference to best management practices, and also to amend Section 23-38 through 23 through 92. End Council, September 23, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Ordinance. That report was favorable.
The passage is on a third reading by hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
We have the petition of Hector Sebelion, DBA Traders World Brockton, LLC, 723 Belmont Street, Brockton, for transfer of second-hand articles license from 21 Torrey Street. End Council, September 9, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Public Safety. That report was favorable.
At this point, councilors, the question is on granting.
Mr. President?
Counselor Farrow?
Just before we vote, because I like to explain what I'm doing and why, part of the reason why we license various professions is to have an accounting of where they are, how they operate, and also consumer protection. This particular applicant, on two occasions, has had a civil action brought against him, and he owes approximately $89,000 to people. Given that, and given the fact that that judgment was after a full court hearing, that's not an allegation, it's after a court hearing, and because of consumer protection, I'm going to vote no on this. I just, particularly where we're going to be dealing with secondhand articles and precious metals and gems, it just seems to me that that calls for additional scrutiny by us. And that kind of outstanding, or those kinds of outstanding judgments, in my opinion, do not lend itself well to me voting for approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The question is on granting by hand vote. All in favor? Opposed? Goes to a third reading.
The question is on granting by hand vote. All in favor?
Opposed? For an opposition.
Might want to call a roll on that one.
Right. Yeah. For an opposition, right? Yeah, so it's granted.
You got four in favor, four.
Four have passed.
Deny people.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so it didn't pass.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Yeah, let's do it. Both of them go to a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Actually, Mr. President, I would just like to make a comment in consideration to what Counselor Farrow mentioned.
Yes.
I would just, as yourself, you're the Chair of Public Safety. I serve on the Public Safety Committee. And I would just like people at home to know that this applicant came before us, and this business has been in business for over 20 years. It's nothing that is new. And all they're doing is it's a transfer of a license from one location to another. So, I just want people to know that as well at home. So, we take into consideration why we support certain businesses. And if, and one of the reasons that I did support this is if we want business owners to stay in business to be able to pay off their debts. So, if we don't help them to stay in business, how are they to pay their debts to society? So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors before we... Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Borogard?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
No.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, four in the negative?
The license has been granted.
Transfer granted for transfer.
Transfer. Been granted for transfer.
We have the petition of Hector Sebelion, DBA Traders World Brockton, LLC, 723 Belmont Street, Brockton, for transfer of second-hand precious metals and gems licensed from 21 Torrey Street, Brockton. End Council, September 9, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Public Safety. That report was favorable.
Again, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on this one?
Azak?
Yes.
Borogard?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
No.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative? Four in the negative?
Transfer has been granted.
Look, we just got...
Item number...
Number 26.
Yep.
An ordinance amending Article 2 of the revised... Strike that. An ordinance amending Article 2 of the city ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 4-21 through Section 4-28 of Chapter 4 is hereby amended as follows. Definitions relative to certificate of fitness.
Refer to ordinance.
An ordinance amending Article 3 of the city ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 4-40 of Chapter 4 is hereby amended by adding the following Section 4-41, Problem Properties Task Force.
Refer to ordinance.
An ordinance amending Article 3 of the city ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 2-186 of Chapter 2 is hereby amended by adding the following Section 2-186, Assistant City Solicitor.
Refer to ordinance.
An ordinance amending Article 3 of the revised ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 2-127 of Chapter 2 is hereby amended by adding the following Section 2-127, Pay Plan.
Refer to ordinance.
Resolve to invite a representative of the Justice Center of Southeastern Massachusetts to present to the City Council proposals currently being reviewed in the State Legislative Session and the Joint Judiciary Committee, the Holmes Act and CEC Bill.
Refer to Finance.
Mr. President?
Counsel Cruz?
Oh, did we do 30? I'm sorry, I might have jumped up too soon.
No, we just did 30. Give me, I know.
I have a late file in the hands of the clerk that I'd like to put in tonight.
Yes. I'm ready ahead. Motion's been made and seconded to accept a late file in favor? Opposed, Mr. Clerk? You can read the late file.
End Council, October 28, 2019. Be it ordained by the City Council, an ordinance establishing the City of Brockton Stormwater Management Manual for best practices for the illicit discharge and connection stormwater ordinance to establish methods for controlling the introduction of pollutants into the municipal separate storm sewer system, which is MS4, in order to comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems Permit Process. This ordinance shall be adopted by incorporation of the City of Brockton, Massachusetts Stormwater Management Manual as a new ordinance in the City of Brockton ordinance forthwith.
Refer to the Committee on Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Nacastro.
Thank you.[1072.13]
This particular applicant, on two occasions, has had a civil action brought against him, and he owes approximately $89,000 to people. Given that, and given the fact that that judgment was after a full court hearing, that's not an allegation, it's after a court hearing, and because of consumer protection, I'm going to vote no on this. I just, particularly where we're going to be dealing with secondhand articles and precious metals and gems, it just seems to me that that calls for additional scrutiny by us. And that kind of outstanding, those kinds of outstanding judgments, in my opinion, do not lend itself well to me voting for approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The question is on granting by hand vote? All in favor? Opposed? For an opposition?
Let's call a roll on that one.
Yeah. For an opposition, yeah, so it's granted.
You got four in favor, four...
What passes?
Nine people.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so it didn't pass. We have a roll call vote. Both of them go to a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Actually, Mr. President, I would just like to make a comment in consideration to what Counselor Fowle mentioned through you. I would just, as yourself, you're the Chair of Public Safety. I serve on the Public Safety Committee. And I would just like people at home to know that this applicant came before us, and this business has been in business for over 20 years. It's nothing that is new, and all they're doing is it's a transfer of a license from one location to another. So I just want people to know that as well at home. So we take into consideration why we support certain businesses, and if, and one of the reasons that I did support this is if we want business owners to stay in business to be able to pay off their debts. So if we don't help them to stay in business, how are they to pay their debts to society? So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors before we... Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Borogad?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
No.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
No.
Passes.
Five in the affirmative, four in the negative?
The license has been granted.
Transfer granted for transfer.
Transfer. It's been granted for transfer.
We have the petition of Hector Seblyon, DBA Traders World Brockton LLC, 723 Belmont Street, Brockton, for transfer of secondhand precious metals and gems licensed from 21 Torrey Street, Brockton, in council, September 9th, 2019. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Public Safety, that report was favorable.
Again, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on this one?
Azak?
Yes.
Borogad?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Darren Encore?
No.
Aniri?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
McGary?
Yes.
Nacastro?
No.
Transfer granted.
Five in the affirmative, four in the negative?
Transfer has been granted. Item number...
Number 26. An ordinance amending Article 2 of the revised, strike that. An ordinance amending Article 2 of the city ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 4-21 through Section 4-28 of Chapter 4 is hereby amended as follows. Definitions relative to certificate of fitness.
Refer to ordinance.
An ordinance amending Article 3 of the city ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 4-40 of Chapter 4 is hereby amended by adding the following, Section 4-41, Problem Properties Task Force.
Refer to ordinance.
An ordinance amending an ordinance, Article 3 of the city ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 2-186 of Chapter 2 is hereby amended by adding the following, Section 2-186, Assistant City Solicitor.
Refer to ordinance.
An ordinance amending Article 3 of the revised ordinances, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton, as follows. That Section 2-127 of Chapter 2 is hereby amended by adding the following, Section 2-127, Pay Plan.
Refer to ordinance.
Resolve to invite a representative of the Justice Center of Southeastern Massachusetts to present to the City Council proposals currently being reviewed in the State Legislative Session and the Joint Judiciary Committee, the Holmes Act and CEC Bill.
Refer to finance.
Mr. President?
Counsel Cruz?
Oh, did we do 30? I'm sorry, I might have jumped up too soon.
No, we just did 30.
I have a late file in the hands of the clerk that I'd like to put in tonight?
Yes, I'm right ahead. Motion's been made and seconded to accept a late file. All in favor? Opposed, Mr. Clerk? You can read the late file.
In council, October 28th, 2019, be it ordained by the City Council, an ordinance establishing the City of Brockton Stormwater Management Manual for best practices for the illicit discharge in connection stormwater ordinance, to establish methods for controlling the introduction of pollutants into the municipal separate storm sewer system, which is MS4, in order to comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems Permit Process. This ordinance shall be adopted by incorporation of the City of Brockton, Massachusetts Stormwater Management Manual as a new ordinance in the City of Brockton ordinance forthwith.
Refer to the Committee on Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Nacastro?
Thank you. I have a late file. May I make a motion to accept it?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the late file. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Clerk, you have the late file.
I resolve to invite Mr. Robert Jenkins, in his capacity as Executive Director of the Brockton Redevelopment Authority, the BRA, to present to the City Council updated information on the BRA's construction of a municipal parking garage, including the construction schedule, budget, and currently expected completion date, and any other related information.
That item will be referred to finance. Any other late files?
Mr. President, I have a late file, and the clerk...
Counsel Borogad has a late file? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed, Mr. Clerk? You must have the late file. There we go. Is it one or two? One?
One.
Okay. Is she moving to move this tonight, or is this just...
Are you looking to...
No.
No?
No, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Communication from the Mayor's Office Grants Coordinator requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of the grant award in the amount of $336,520 from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Committees Grants, to Mayor's Office Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Grant Fund. These funds will be used for the John L. O'Donnell Playground. The total cost of the project is $523,600, with the required match of $157,000... Let me check that before I go any further. 157, that's supposed to be a corner. That's supposed to be a corner, I'm sure. $157,080 to come from the community development block grant funds, and that would be the CDBG.
And that item will be referred to finance as well.
We have an order from the mayor recommending the same. Communication, I'm sorry, from the mayor recommending.
Placed on file.
And a resolution to file and accept grants with hand from the Commonwealth of Mass